It's ten o'clock, so I'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. This is a regular Commissioners' Court meeting for County of Starr, Monday, February the 11th. Let the record show that we do have quorum, everyone being present. And I'd like to welcome everyone and thank you all for being here. If everyone would please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible)
The minutes. Have you all had a chance to look at them?
I moved in second to approve the minutes.
Motion carries. Claims, Mr. Carter, are they in order?
The claims are all over here.
Moved in second to approve them. Discussion. Alvin Fair, please, aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Before we go with our reports, is there anyone that has a presentation or needs to come before the court that's from out of town? If not, you all are certainly welcome to stay for the duration of the meeting. Yes, sir? What item are you?
Oh, okay.
Okay, you want to go? Let's go on to item number six. This is a presentation from MASA. I'm sorry? Sure. This is the Medical Transport Solution.
Judge, Commissioners, thanks for having me today. I work with a company called MASA. It's Medical Air Services Association. I've come before you before in the past. I don't know if you gentlemen are aware that the air ambulance in the valley is no longer flying here out of McAllen. The closest aircraft is out of Laredo, out of Webb County. And they have actually two companies flying out of there. The good news is that I've heard that there's another company moving into the valley sooner than later. We do have three fixed-wing airplanes that fly out of the valley, out of the McAllen, Hardin area. My biggest concern, I'm actually a fireman in McAllen, been a fireman there for 24 years, and I do this on my, on the side, this business. I work for this company on the side. My biggest concern for all the citizens in the valley is that they are falling short when it comes to medical insurance, the coverage, for any company, any county, any city, any school district. A lot of people are falling under the false impression that they have health insurance, and if they get transported in an emergency, that it's covered 100 percent. And that's just not the case. What insurances are doing now is they pay only usual and customary. So say if you get flown by an aircraft for a medical emergency and the bill's $50,000, usual and customary is around $30,000. So they're going to pay the 80, or 70 percent, because it's out of network, they're going to pay 70 percent of that lower $30,000. That other $20,000 that's owed is going to be balanced billed to you in the back end. So you're going to end up paying between $25,000 to $40,000 for a flight out of pocket. People just don't realize that. And what our, what the company does that I work for is we cover that out-of-pocket gap, that huge gap that's in there. We come in and cover that out-of-pocket gap. So it doesn't, it leaves your employees with not having to pay anything for an ambulance transport. The great thing about this product is that it covers ground ambulants and air ambulants. So if you're transported locally by Starr County EMS, you're still covered. You don't pay anything out of pocket. A typical transport from here to your local hospital here probably runs between $1,500 to $2,000 out of pocket, which people don't realize until they have to use it. And being a fireman, the biggest thing that I see is, you know, we go, we get called out to somebody's house for a shortness of breath, something like that. We get there, their biggest fear is not going to the hospital, their biggest fear is how much this is going to cost me. And that's just a shame. Because the bad thing is, we end up going back two hours later and they're having a full-blown heart attack. Because they were so afraid going to the hospital, they just wanted to get checked, didn't want to go. This kind of alleviates that pressure on the employees. And the best thing about this product is that it covers you nationwide with any company. So you can be anywhere in the country, get transported in Colorado, and you're still covered. And then the middle, there's three different programs. There's the $9 a month program, which is ground only, covers you with only ground ambulants. There's a $14, which is called Emergent Plus, that covers ground and air. Plus, it has an added benefit called Repatriation. What that does is if you're more than 100 miles from home and you end up in a hospital somewhere, as soon as you are ready to get transported back, they'll get you back home at no cost to your local hospital. So you can recover back home close to family and friends. And then we have the Platinum Coverage, which is $9 a month. That one's worldwide coverage. So if you're doing, you're traveling outside the U.S., it's a good program to have. But, you know, it's one of those things that just people don't realize they need until they need it. And my biggest deal is for you guys to be preemptive on that and allow this product to be involved, be included in your benefit package. I know it's hard to increase pay on people, but a good thing is to be able to add a robust benefit package for your employees so they can, and really, there's no cost to the county. It's all up to the employees whether they want to get involved in it or not.
Yeah, you know, I think it'd be a good thing to offer to our employees. Of course, it's not mandatory. Whoever wants it can select it. If they don't, that's fine, too.
Correct.
The only question that I would have is, since we've already gone through the enrollment period and all that with our insurance, can we still add on other things?
We can. This product falls under IRS Code 155, so it's not attached to the cafeteria products. So we can enroll this any time of the year. It's just up to the county how they want to proceed as far as getting it out to the employees and offering it to them. What I've done in the past with some other counties is I just set up meetings with each department and go out and do a quick 15, 10- to 15-minute presentation to them, and they can sign up then. When I get done with that process, usually takes a couple of weeks, I'll turn it all over to payroll, and we'll go through the process of getting everybody enrolled that signed up.
Well, I certainly think it's something good, especially now that we lost our chopper services. And by the way, we lost it not because of anything having to do with the county, we lost it because it just wasn't economically feasible for those people to continue. We would have loved for them to have continued, but I guess we just weren't using it enough, which is also good.
Well, probably one of the biggest things about that chopper, because I used to actually work for that company before I came to this company, is kind of an unknown, is that that chopper for that company had more flights than any other chopper in their, in their whole company, which is amazing to me. They were flying 40 to 45 missions a month. They were, they were very busy. The problem is, is the payer mix in the valley is horrible. They're flying a lot of people that aren't insured, they're flying a lot of people that are insured but they can't afford the back end of that bill, and then they're flying illegal aliens and stuff like that that aren't, don't have any means to pay. So they were getting a big subsidy from the, from the hospitals, and that subsidy ran out. So they ended up not being able to fly here. The good thing is, the company that's moving in, from what I've heard, they're the largest air ambulance company in the nation, so they can, they can afford to be here.
So these companies are out of business now?
Yes, sir. They're not out of business. They're still in business. They're not servicing the valley anymore.
My son has, has bought insurance for me and my wife, you know, for this, for this year, but it's, it's no good.
Well, I wouldn't say it's no good. It's just not good. They're not going to pick you up in the valley.
I think...
Unless you're traveling.
But I think, I'm sure, if, if I understood correctly, they're, they're in Laredo.
They are.
So if you call them, they would come from Laredo to service you. But the problem with that is, by the time Laredo gets here, you're probably in McAllen already.
Well, and the problem...
Or dead, yeah.
The problem is, is that there's two different companies flying out of Laredo, and if they call for an aircraft, you don't know which one you're going to get. So if you're just with that one company and they call the other company, then really, it's not going to help you at all. The beauty of this benefit, the MASA product, we don't own any helicopters, we don't own any ambulances, we just pay the bill. So you can get flown by any company, or you can get transported by any ground ambulance. You just submit the bill to us, and we pay that company directly. So it's a very, very simple product and very well-needed product for the county.
We have you down as a presentation, so we cannot take any action.
Correct.
But what I'll do if the court desires is I'll put you on our next Commissioners' Court as an action item, and then we can take some action.
Sounds good. Appreciate it, gentlemen.
Thank you, Mr. Governor. Anyone else? Let me, you come before the court. If not, we'll, we'll follow our, our agenda. First item is the Gas Department.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners.
Good morning.
My report is in your package. I have a little correction to make on my report. I normally prepare this report a week in advance, and in the middle of the report, it refers to J.F. Utilities replacing our line. And I had put that it was completed, but he's run into a little problem on the, on the Highway 83 at Royal. He's hit some pockets of gravel, hardened gravel. So he's already broken two bits, and it's, he's, he's got about 100 feet left to go. I had breakfast with him this morning, and he said he would be through before the end of the week. He already finished on 3167, so we only have that 100 feet more to go, and we should be through. The rest of the report is, is complete. Any questions?
Any questions in the House report?
Thank you.
Thank you. The transfer station?
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners. My report is there in front of you. Last month, I told you that we had already ordered the tire cutter, but they, when we put in the order, they start building the machines. They don't have them stocked there, so they already started working on it. It should probably take another five, six weeks before we'll get it delivered. I just wanted to update you back on that. Other than that, everything's been normal operation in the transfer station.
We don't have any questions. Any, any questions on the transfer stations? Thank you, Commissioners. Taxes Assessor, Ms. Salinas?
Good morning, Judge. Good morning, Commissioners. Before I start giving my report, you have it in front of you. There's a correction on the front page, and total Starr County current collections, County entities year-to-date, October 2018, it's, instead of J-U-N, it's J-A-N, January of 2019. Okay, the total countywide collections for January 19 were $3,323,016. In January of 19, there were $5,355,041. There was a total collection of $2,318,811, less than last year. Year-to-date, we have collected $2,882,082, less than last year. Our current collections for Starr, Starr County entities were $1,860,968. Current collections in January 2018 were $2,980,444. There was a total current collection of $1,091,475, less than last year. Year-to-date, we have collected $917,405, less than last year. Our total delinquent collections for January 19, just for Starr County, were $213,524. Total delinquent collections in January 2018, there were $333,163. There was a total delinquent collection of $119,638, less than last year. Year-to-date, we have collected $888,200, less than last year. Our current collections for Starr, Starr County entities were $1,860,968. Current collections in January 2018 were $2,980,444. There was a total current collection of $1,091,475, less than last year. Year-to-date, we have collected $917,405, less than last year. Our total delinquent collections for January 19, just for Starr County, were $213,524. Total delinquent collections in January 2018, there were $333,163. There was a total delinquent collection of $119,638, less than last year. Year-to-date, we have collected $80,747, less than last year. As of January the 31st, the tax office has collected 73 percent of the projected collections. Projected collections remaining are $3,717,531,67 cents. Any questions?
We have collected less, much this year?
Yes, we collected less, less than last year because some of the payments came in late. So, yeah, last year, we collected more than this year.
But even though like that, we are still, you already collected 73 percent?
Yes.
Of the 80 percent that we have projected, or of the 100 percent?
Right, of the 80, let me...
Eighty, what did you use, 85?
Eighty-six.
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 So you collected 73 percent out of the 86 that we budgeted.
Right. As of January 31st, 2019, the tax office has collected 73 percent of the projected collections, projected 18 collections remaining is $3,717,531,67. Out of the $13,8093, that's the 86 percent, the, the projected amount.
Three million can come up to maybe 100 percent?
Last year, we collected a little bit more than, than the percent, projected percentage amount.
Yeah, the, if I read the report correctly, we're 3.7 million away from the 86 percent.
And we collected less, we collected less than last year? So last year, by this time, we already had collected the whole amount?
No. No, because we collected about a million less this year than last year. So at this point in time last year, we were about 2.7, 2.8, short. But it's like Ms. Salinas says, it depends when the big companies pay. If, if they paid in October, November, you know, then of course, our numbers increase. If they didn't, then one payer alone could, could be half a million dollars or more.
Yes, you're right. Thank you. Any more questions?
No, ma'am. Thank you, Ms. Salinas. County Clerk, Mr. Montzal.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners.
Good morning.
The report's on in front of you. It's for the month of January this year. And vital preservation fee, we had 150 new filings for a total of $163. Records management, 447 new filings for a total of 5,690. Copies, 177 new copies for a total of $2,388. Records archive fee, 404 new filings for a total of 5,575. Our marriage licenses were 26 new ones for $900 for the state. And their birth certificates were 125 new. Birth certificates for the month of January for an amount of $248.40 to the state. And the county clerk, we had 574 new filings for a total of $14,363.35. And then courthouse security was 389 new filings for a total of $593. Total due for the month of January to our treasurer's office is $29,920.75. Just to let the court know, I know we had a little hiccup with the birth certificates. It was just a transition phase from moving from Dennis to myself. The state is really strict when it comes to ordering that, so we couldn't order that until, I think it was way after the beginning of January. Those have already come in, so we should be good to go from here on out. Any questions?
Any questions?
No.
Thank you, Mr. ...
Thank you, Judge.
Sheriff's Department?
Good morning, Your Honors, Commissioners.
Good morning.
The projected revenues for January 2019, we collected, projected to collect from the city of Aurora, $420. From Roma, $600. And from Securis Agile Communication System, which we phased out, $211. From the United States Marshal Services, $179,764. Hidal County Sheriff's Office, $60,750 for total revenues projected for January for Count for February the 6th, federal inmates were 116. Hidal County, we raised the count to 53. This is because we have a big influx with the marshals, so we decided to up the count a little bit with Hidal County. Starr County inmates, which are our local inmates, are at 82, and for total count, were 251. The average, the percentages for federal inmates for January, 111, and Hidal County was 36. The difference between January 2018 to January 2019 is a difference of $9,566 additional from this time last year. We currently collected, or projected to collect, 37.88 percent of our projected revenues for 2019.
What was the last statement?
Which is that one, Judge?
The, the one you said about the projections?
The 37 percent?
Mm-hmm.
We've collected 37.88 percent from our 2.58 million. This is once all the checks come in.
Okay, and, and the top number, the 1.6, that's how much you...
Yes, that's, that's a deficit.
That's what's, well, it's really not a deficit.
Not that, but the...
That's how much we need to...
We need to collect to meet the goal.
Okay. Very good.
It seemed to be on track.
Yeah. Because this is only four months.
Correct.
So this will be a third, we still have two-thirds remaining. Yeah, we should be over...
That is correct. And with the, with the, with the change that we did with, between Hidalgo and the feds, it should be more, a little more steady now.
Yeah.
So we're, fluctuation is huge. We lose, we bring in 50, we lose 50 by Friday. But the federal judge sentencing individuals for five days. So by the time they get here, they've already been in custody two days, so three days they go back to deportation. And right now, all we're getting is misdemeanors from the feds, so we just switch it up a little bit, just to keep...
Well, it's, it's been pretty steady, you know. What I look at is the total number between the feds and Hidalgo, because that's the, what brings in the money.
Correct.
So, and that has been pretty steady.
Yeah.
Any questions, comments?
Thank you, Judge, Commissioners.
International Bridge?
Good morning.
Good morning.
This is a report for January 2019. The total revenue for traffic, it's $205,062. And we show a decrease of $2,970 for the month of January 2019 compared to the month of January 2018. And we also show a decrease of $25,351.50 on collections for the month of January 2019 compared to the month of December 2018. And we have other collections of $651 with 1 cent. And the grand total for January is $205,713 with 1 cent. Do you have any questions?
Any questions, comments?
Thank you.
Treasurer's Report, Mr. Rosales?
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners. You have the, my reports in front of you. This is for ending in January 2019. And if you could just follow along with me, the total balance on the general fund is At this time last year, 2018, we had $2,204,884 with 80 cents for an increase of $771,073 with 49 cents. The road and bridge, the balance on, on that would be $820,029 with 60 cents. Last year, we had at this time, $1,164,148 with 3 cents. That would be a decrease of $344,18 with 43 cents. The enterprise funds, we have a, an ending balance of $674,145 with 88 cents. At this time last year, we had $548,968 with 74 cents, an increase of $125,177 with 14 cents. And the drainage district, we have a balance of $823,556 with 60 cents. At this time last year, we had $541,119 with 52 cents for an increase of $282,437 with 8 cents. This brings the total general fund balance to $5,296,990 with 37 cents. Last year, it was at $4,459,121 with 9 cents, and an overall increase of $834,569 with 30 cents. Any questions?
Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rosales. Auditor, Mr. Carter.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners.
Good morning.
You have a copy of my report in your package, I believe. This is the county auditor's report for the month of January 2019. Attached to the report are the cash reconciliation reports as of January the 31st, 2019. For the general fund, which shows cash available of $2,581,891.13. Road and bridge fund cash available at month-end was $663,492.88. And the payroll clearing fund contained $756,959.71. The summary of the expenditure report for the general fund shows the year-to-date expended of 32.63 percent. And then within the general fund are the following departments. The county judge has, department has expended 28.39 percent year-to-date. The county clerk is at 34.72 percent. And by the way, these percentages compare to the percent of the year elapsed of 33.7 percent, which is 123 days divided by 365. The personnel department has expended 30.38 percent. The planning department is at 30.20 percent. Federal and state programs is at 30.61 percent. The countywide general fund is at 32.51 percent. The county court at law is at 29.12 percent. 229th District Court is at 38.25 percent. 381st District Court is at 30.93 percent. The district clerk is at 29.99 percent. The county attorney has expended 35.93 percent of that budget. The district attorney has expended 28.9 percent. Elections, elections administrator has expended 58.58 percent. The county auditor has expended 30 percent even. The county treasurer has expended 32.33 percent. Tax assessor collector has expended 29.66 percent. Building maintenance department has expended 28.85 percent. The detention center has expended 35.82 percent. The juvenile detention center has expended 28.34 percent. Sheriff's Department is at 31.42 percent. The agricultural extension service is at 27.95 percent. Fire Station Precinct 2 has expended 35.45 percent. And Fire Station Precinct 4 has expended 34.78 percent. And the nutrition program for Precinct 4 has expended 44.45 percent.
What, what about the other fire departments and nutrition?
They're all, they're... The sheriff's department is at 31.42%. The agricultural extension service is at 27.95%. Fire station precinct 2 has expended 35.45%. And fire station precinct 4 has expended 34.78%. And the nutrition program for precinct 4 has expended 44.45%.
What about the other fire departments and nutrition?
They're all, they're all at or below the 33.7%. I highlighted, I highlighted those particular ones because they are slightly over the year-to-date comparison number. The expenditure report for the road and bridge fund is summarized in total, has expended 29.84% of its budget year-to-date. And then within that total are, precinct 1 has expended 38.46%, precinct number 2 has expended 34.9%, precinct number 3 has expended 34.89%, precinct number 4 has expended 29.05%, and the countywide road and bridge fund has expended 15.8%. The revenue reports for the general fund, our current taxes received are at 59.19%. Delinquent taxes are at 22.84%. The nutrition program grant is at 23.28%. The 911 services grant is at 20.99%. Fees of office are at 36.49%. The detention center is at 9.48%. State salary supplements are at 45.49%. International bridge transfers are 11.77%. Building permits are at 40.84%. And the total general fund is at 41.2% of its budgeted collections year-to-date. In the road and bridge fund, our current taxes received are 59.16% of the budgeted amount. Delinquent taxes received are at 22.96%. We haven't had any transfers from the motor vehicle department. Fines and forfeitures are at 23.52%. Vehicle weight fees are at 66.36%. And the total road and bridge fund is at 47.2%. At the top of page 5 is a summary of the international bridge operations through January 31st. Bridge tolls collected are at 25.11% of the budgeted amount year-to-date. The rent from Ueta and the rent from the port facility there, and then the international, the total, total revenue through January 31st was $1,987,263 for 25.25%. And the expenditures were $1,986,378 for 25.9%. The gas operating system shows year-to-date revenue through January 31st of $282,984 for 27.08% and expenditures of $284,975 for 27.27%. The solid waste transfer system shows total revenue year-to-date of $426,512 for 31.59% and total expenditures of $503,092 for 37.25%. At the top of page 6 is a summary of the debt owed by Starr County. The tax note series 2014A has a balance of $236,142. And of course, I'm sure the court remembers that the court has authorized the payoff of that, of that one, and that payoff is scheduled to occur on February the 28th. I've made all the arrangements with the, with the note holder, and the, later on the agenda is the authorization to publish the notice and to get that accomplished. There's an equipment loan to KS State Bank with a balance of $624,210. There's an equipment loan to Revenue Markets by the International Bridge for $66,440. There's an equipment loan to Caterpillar Financial Services with a balance of $44,253. An equipment loan to CNH Industrial Capital with a balance of $47,639. There's an equipment loan to John Deere Financial with a balance of $32,306. And another one to John Deere Equipment, John Deere Financial for $62,207. And the participation with the City of Roma for the international bridge, our balance is down to $1,214,140, making total debt for the county of $2,327,337.
Mr. Carter, on the, the last one, City of Roma, we're approximately 50, $50,000 less than the original amount. Is this on the payments that we're doing, currently doing, or?
Yes, the amount, the amount required under the settlement agreement is $49,500 monthly, and we've been paying $62,500 monthly. So that difference is reducing the principal. In the debt service fund, we have a balance of $418,456 compared to the tax note series 2014A of $236,142. So there's a surplus of $182,314. At the top of page 7, there is one invoice listed that the county auditor's office is holding unpaid, and that is an ad, an ad litem attorney invoice for $400 in the county court at law, for which there's not enough money in that budget line item to cover that. The county court at law judge is aware of that. And then the last item there is a list of four different additional revenues that I have, that I have certified year-to-date. They're the same four that were on last month's report. Any questions?
Any questions? Thank you, Mr. Carter. Move on to item number 7, and this is the approval of the vendors' list.
Yes, Your Honor, the vendors, the vendors' applications have all been reviewed and are all in order.
Second, move and second to approve discussion. All unfair, please, aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Item 8 is an action item, and this is to deputize Samantha Nicole Barrera for the Starr County Clerk's Office.
Second, Your Honor.
Okay, I have a motion, a second to approve discussion. All unfair, please, aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Item 9, an action item, is to improve the investment policy for fiscal year 2017 through 20, September 2018. Mr. Gonzalez?
Yes, we tabled this item last, on the last meeting, simply because we weren't able to locate the, the policy for, for that time period. We are requesting, if we can, have it approved by the Commissioners to sign.
And I believe you all have that in your packet. Anything out of the ordinary, Mr. Gonzalez, that we need to know?
Of, as far as the policy is concerned?
Yeah.
No, 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 sorry.
Motion to approve, Your Honor.
Moved and second to approve discussion. All unfair, please, aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Item 10 is also to approve the investment policy for fiscal year 2018, 2019. I guess we hadn't done it?
No, so I'm requesting again, yeah, to have it...
Motion to approve, Your Honor.
Okay, moved and second to approve discussion. All unfair, please, aye. Oppose. Item 11 is an action item to approve the investment report for the fourth quarter of fiscal year 1718.
Since, since we already have the, the policies approved, I'd like to present my report. I think you have it in front of you. Just for the record, all Starr County investments are in compliance with the Public Funds Investment Act and the Starr County's investment policy. The total investment portfolio in C, in certificate deposits at the end of December 31st, 2018 is $2,231,83 with 58 cents. The overall interest earned for the fourth quarter is $1,404 with 99 cents. As per the terms of the depository contracts, the county's amount in deposits are properly collateralized in accordance with the pledged securities report from Lone Star Bank. And also for the record, this report for the first quarter of fiscal year 2018, 2019 is prepared in compliance with the Texas Public Funds Investment Act. Are there any questions?
Second, Your Honor.
Thank you.
Moved and second to approve discussion. All unfair, please, aye. Oppose. Item 12 is an action item, and this is to approve a notice of redemption on Starr County for tax note series 2014. Mr. Carter?
As I mentioned earlier in my report, this, this action item is to approve the notice of redemption as far as being published.
Second, Your Honor.
I have a motion, a second to approve discussion. All unfair, please, aye. Oppose. Motion carry. Give me a second before I get all lost in all this paperwork. Okay, item 13 is an action item, and this is to approve the transfer of $241,986.40 from INS Fund Number 301 to the general fund loan expense line, item number 9-100-0181-6300 to facilitate the payoff of tax note series 2014A as previously discussed by Mr. Carter. And this was previously approved by Commissioners' Court.
It was, and then after we consulted with our CPA firm, and we were advised that this was better to take this extra step of having this out of the window, so...
Motion to approve, Your Honor.
We were advised this is the correct way to do it.
I have a motion, a second to approve discussion. All unfair, please, aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Item 14 is also an action item, and this is to approve certification of revenues in the general fund for loan expenditure line item 9-100-0181-6300, and this is to pay off the tax note series 2014A.
Second, Your Honor.
Moved and second to approve discussion. All unfair, please, aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Item 15 is an action item, and this is to approve the lease agreements between County of Starr and CDI, that's Community Development Institute, the headstarts.
He was here, you know, he was back there, I think he left it.
Okay, I guess, have you all been?
I think also they want that they're using up there, like in, in, in...
Right, yeah, for the head start.
What used to be TFC?
Yes.
The migrants.
Second, Your Honor.
Moved and second to approve discussion. All unfair, please, aye. Oppose.
The only thing is make sure that you get the lease agreement, because you're the only one that can sign them, right?
Yeah, yeah, and I guess I'll bring them in. Do we have?
The...
Okay. Anything, sir, that you want to say about the, the lease?
Oh, sorry.
That's okay. We've already approved them. We've already approved them, but you're welcome to address this.
I just want to thank the courts, you know, for all their assistance, and we're only like 15, so we're sort of 15 hours old, so... Sorry to recoporate from the fact that we went out of business, so we, we had no higher knowledge of the shutdown, so, so we went through where the community is out there, and we're letting them know that we're...
Okay, on the lease agreements, everything's pretty much the same as last year?
Yes, the, the, the reason we're presenting that is so that we can, all the companies will, will be new with our fiscal year, for January 18.
Any questions?
No, sir.
Okay, well, like I said, we've already approved them, so they'll be ready shortly. Item 16 is also an action item to approve the lease agreement between Starr County and Border Region Behavioral Health Center. Anyone presenting that?
Move it to table.
I have a motion to table. Moved and second. All unfair, please, aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Item 17 is an action item, and this is to approve the appointment order of a new Starr County auditor by Judge Abson.
There are two items there on the same one, the judge.
I'm sorry?
No, I know that's one.
That's one? Yeah, well, let's skip over that line. Let's go on to item 18, and this is an action item to approve a permit, an application for Santa Cruz property, LTD to cross countywide to install water line services. The planning department, anyone here?
I got a call from an engineer, and he was being placed on the agenda. This is up in, up in Pinto Road, the guy that Rupert, is that the same Rupert?
I don't know.
The Santa Cruz here, but I don't see anybody doing any crossing there. But I don't, maybe this is the one that they're talking about. They want to cross there, and it's not, it's not the county, Starr County not servicing that area. It's Awasad or...
Awasud, Sullivan.
Yeah, they're under La Joya.
Yeah. He called me and said, he said they want to cross the, the road.
Okay, you want to make a motion if it's that one, that that's the one that's approved?
I just moved to approve it, it's that, the one I'm talking about.
Okay, if it's anything in the Santa Cruz area, that one's not approved.
Well, I would say that, why not, you know, but I don't see any development there, you know.
I don't see that.
Okay, we'll approve it.
Second, Your Honor.
Moved and second to approve discussion. All unfair, please, aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Item 19 is an action item, and this is to approve a refund for parcel number 0039634 in the amount of $157.17 granted disable exemption in parcel 0046238.
Second, Your Honor.
Both of them are disabled. I have a motion, a second to approve both. Discussion. All unfair, please, aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Item 20 is a donation of $120 from Jorge Resendez to the nutrition program precinct 4.
Move to bad donation.
Moved and second. All unfair, please, aye. Item 21 is an action item, and this is to approve a donation in the amount of $435, $435 for Madanca 2003 to the nutrition program precinct 4.
Move to bad.
Moved and second. Moved in second. Discussion. Honored and fair, please, aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Item 22 is to accept lease payment in the amount of $1,000 from EcoSite to Starr County Nutrition Program 4.
Done, will you, Your Honor?
Moved in second. Discussion. Honored and fair, please, aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Item 23 is to install some streetlights in La Minita and in Salineño.
Yeah, Your Honor, there are curves that we need a light up, so move it past, Your Honor.
Done, will you, Your Honor?
Moved in second to approve. Discussion. Honored and fair, please, aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Item 24 is an action item and is to request a loan from General Fund to pay PO 113587 in the amount of $3,150 for engineering services for the CDBG number 7217440 paving project. This is a reimbursement.
Second, Your Honor.
Moved in second to approve. Discussion. Honored and fair, please, aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Item 25 is an action item and is to approve modification of scope of work for Los Morenos Drainage Project. Ms. Iver?
That is correct, Judge. The map is before you, and we're going to, it's a modification where the project is going to end up at San Julián Road.
You're going to submit this to the state?
That is correct. It's already been submitted to the state.
What, and what are they going to be facing?
It's going to reduce the scope. Instead of it going to 83, it's going to end on San Julián Road. And that's going to be for phase one.
Okay.
And what is phase two, three, four, and five?
Phase two is going to be after San Julián Road.
San Julián to the river.
That is correct.
How much money is that available?
For phase one?
Two.
We haven't done phase two yet, so we're working on phase one.
So we don't know?
No.
I want to go on record that any money is going to be available for phase one? It's a hundred and some thousand, right?
It was 104,000.
Did I relinquish my part to precinct two so we can work over on that river? Whatever, whatever had, I had coming.
I think it all was for precinct one and two, right?
That is correct.
But for the most part?
It's mostly on the precinct one.
Ninety some percent is precinct one.
But I got good construction sense, it doesn't remove money. I can, I can deal with it.
Yes, sir. Alexa, Your Honor.
Okay. I'm sorry, was there a motion to the?
Motion in second, Your Honor.
In second? Okay. Yes, sir. You want to use the podium, Mayor?
First off, I'd like to thank Commissioner Alvarez for all the work he's done on Moreno's Creek. A little perturbed with, that the project is ending right now at San Julián Road. We do have serious problems down the line also. What is the timeframe for those phases?
Right now, for phase one, it's up until August.
August?
That is correct.
But we have no idea how the money can be spent, right?
The money has to be spent on that project. On construction.
But how?
How? We're going to work, construct the project. It has to be constructed.
It's going to go out for bids.
That is correct.
You got to be, you're going to have plans, engineer plans, right?
That is correct. We have the engineer here.
Are you going to follow the same, or are you going to have new plan?
What's the scope of the work?
It's going to go up to San Julián.
I mean, you should have, I mean, they won't, would you?
Commissioner, the, I guess, remind me, the plans have been in place since 2012. I guess, we all know that the deal break got delayed because of the condemnation process and all that. The reason we're doing this is to be compliant with the GLA requirement, because the county and the county placed a request in the timeline, so we could allocate or use the money that were available. That is the reason we're doing this. The, we're dividing this probably into, it's going to start on the same point, which is Eagle Street, and then San Julián Road for the first phase, and then from San Julián to the 83, it's going to be based on the second phase. The thing to say here is that from San Julián to the 83, it's not really a canal, it's a swell, where the elevation is going to be, in San Julián Road, it should be around two and a half, three feet. And then at the 83, where it ends, it ends at the, at the natural ground. This, it is, it, it's been not to create the velocities of the water.
Julio, I told Maricela I wouldn't put her on the spot, and I won't. But I'll put you on the spot. What's going to be being out?
What's going to be out?
What is going to be being out?
Which is the excavating, the excavation of the canal from Eagle Street to San Julián.
But how can we excavate? We don't have the properties here. We have only one.
What I'm explaining is the question that was arise for the engineering part, I'm dealing with legal, that has to be passed on to the.
You see, Judge, this is the problem. And we need the money, don't get me wrong, but we don't know how we're going to spend it. Doesn't make any sense. It does not make any sense at all. We need the money, we're applying for the money, we're asking for the, for the extension, but we don't know how we're going to spend it. How we're going to use it. That's why I was doing to Commissioner Peña what I was doing. I relinquished my part, porque acá no salimos de aquí. And that's been going on since we started this conversation, seven months ago, eight months ago.
We need to finish project, or we'll lose the general funds.
Yeah, I thought I was, or I was under the impression that the, that the money, well, one, we had to kind of change in the middle of the race on account that we were, our backs were to a wall, where we either had to return the money or return even some of the money that we had already spent. And that's, of course, we, we don't want to do that.
Correct.
Return any money. Now, they gave us the extension.
Correct.
And I think we were all there when we talked about the extension.
Correct.
When, when the people came down from Austin, we were all there.
I had to walk out, so I wouldn't have come through.
Oh, okay, okay. So, and, and I think what was discussed was that the money, if we got the extension, which thank God we did.
Correct.
Then that money was going to go towards the condemnation, or, or to buy some property so we could make a retaining.
Which is in the phase one. We do have to collect property in phase one.
So I, I was under the impression that the whole monies that would, that would come in were going to be all used in phase one.
That is correct.
Okay.
And that is the money that we have for the construction that's left over, 104,000.
So right now, the money that we, the projects, we can, we're going to stop at San Julián Road.
That is correct. That was agreed in the meeting, to be able to use all those money.
Where are we going to start? If we're going to stop in San Julián, where are we going to start?
Eagle.
We don't have the properties yet.
We're going to have to go through the condemnation process. It still has to go through condemnation process, because there's three properties on there that have to go through condemnation process. It's the same thing, it's just modification of the scope of work.
My other point, Judge, in Maricela, like I tell, I talk to you with me last week, and I told you I wouldn't put you in the spot. The condemnation process, Judge, is going to take a long time, it's not going to happen from here to August. And we know that. And Mr. Canales is not here. So we have to determine how we're going to spend that money. I guess, the hundred and some thousand on, on the one section that we have acquired over there by, to the western part? I can clean that with a backhoe.
We have to use the money, we'll return back. It has to be for that project.
Yeah. See, the other thing that I was under the impression was that, once we got to San Julián, the water would naturally flow, and maybe this is a question for Julio.
Yeah, that's true.
Would naturally flow over the existing terrain all the way to the Arroyo de los Morenos.
That's correct. That is why it was decided to cut in there, because it doesn't have to be excavated.
And also, if we did not get to San Julián, and we get a rainy spell, then the people that got flooded before would get flooded again. And this is what we're trying to avoid. What we don't want is for those people to get flooded again. And that's the reason it was decided to go to San Julián. Is that correct, Commissioner?
That's correct.
So, you know, I don't see what the issue is now. This has been discussed all along.
Well, my concern is that I'd like to see the whole project completed, and now that I'm hearing, okay, that we have phases, that's fine, but to me, condemnation has just taken from here to eternity, you know, to get that, and I think some quicker action should be taken, or somebody, a pilot should be lit a little higher, okay, to get on that, okay?
I could not agree with you more, Mayor. You know, as far as that the condemnation has been taking too much time. Unfortunately, those are things that are outside our control, you know, because that goes to legal, it goes to all these other things, and, and we've been pushing. We've been pushing.
Julio, I don't recall, Julio, because it's been a long while, and I haven't been using the plants. I've deviated from the plants, and you know that. But how far north does the plants go? Only all the, all the way to?
Eagle.
Eagle Street, right?
From where UN or where you work?
From Eagle Street.
All the way to you, which is?
Eagle.
5,000 and 120 feet.
So Maricela, you have to decide how that money is going to be used in that, in that section then. And if you're going to wait for condemnation, you're married full of grace.
Well, maybe, maybe we can negotiate with those people, and, you know, the thing is, they have to be reasonable. The, the one thing that, that we're very concerned about, especially with social media and all this stuff going around here, around town, that if those properties are appraised at $1,000, we cannot pay $10,000, because the first thing that's going to come back is, no, but this compadre, ese, esto, el otro, pasale el favor. We don't do any favors, but that's the first thing that gets out there by a lot of people in our community. So that's the reason that you all are getting hurt by a lot of those comments, you know. We want to do things fast and quickly and correctly, but we also need to protect the county, which is our number one goal, is to protect the county. So that's.
And I've been hearing my budget, Judge, and I'm going, let me explain how, from, from the property that we have bought to San Julián, to San Julián Road, I have expended from my budget, man hours and everything, to a total of 104,000. And, but, but I'm, I'm sure that, like I said, it's not the final solution, but it alleviates some of the problem with what I've done there.
Yeah, and, and that is so, you know. I look at every penny that gets spent. And Commissioner Alvarez has spent a lot of his own precinct money to get to where we are right now. And like I said, the reason it was decided to do that is to protect the people that get flooded, that hopefully that will not happen again. Are we going to end there? Of course not. You know, we need to get it all the way down to the river. Unfortunately, we don't have the resources at this point in time to do that, but we'll continue getting, getting monies where we can, and if not, we'll have to budget it ourselves. But it, it's going to get fixed, but we don't have the resources.
There's a real section that the county has bought, compared to Los Carreras.
Okay.
The county has bought it. If that's the only place you can spend money, go ahead and put it out for bid. I won't take it out of my budget. I won't, I won't clear that land from, from my budget, put it out for bid, because that probably is the only thing you're going to be able to spend money on there.
I'll get what the state, I'll get advice from them and see what they tell me.
I was hoping Commissioner Peña could use it, the money you want to buy up north, that you can?
No, we can't, we've got to use it there.
I was hoping he could use it there, but apparently, that's why I was asking Julio, where does it end?
And then the first one, Your Honor, doesn't have a tier title, so we're going to have to go into.
Yeah. So, you know, I, I can assure everyone that the Commissioners and the Court and federal and state programs are doing as much as we possibly can with the resources that we have and staying within the law.
And I appreciate Maricela, because I work with her a lot. I know I do.
Yeah, she's in my office every day.
I know, I know I do.
But that's fine. We are going to get it done. We are getting.
I'm sorry, Maricela.
And, and hopefully, you know, everything will work out. You know, I'm going to give a bad example, and I hope I don't put my foot in my mouth, but, you know, when I was, when I was doing engineering and construction, and, and we would do, of course, we would do paving, and when we would start construction, everyone was pissed at us, because there was mud, there's dirt, there's, I mean, equipment, it's just a mess when we're working through it.
It happened to me, Judge.
Yeah, and, and one time, our district engineer showed up at the site, and everyone was all riled up. And he said this example, and like I said, I don't know if I should say it, but I will. He said, "Construction is like having a baby. It's really a pain, but then you have a wonderful end, end product, you know, once it's done." This is very similar to what we're trying to do right now. We're going through the labor pains, but at the end, we're going to have a wonderful thing out there. So just bear with us.
Your Honor, how many parcels or needed are still pending to?
Three. Maricela, no, but three?
Three. Actually, actually, four. One doesn't have a tier title, and the other three, we can't be able to negotiate to the extent of by.
We can negotiate, Commissioner, but we need to stay close to the appraised value.
Did you want to take it right into the county?
We can't spend the whole construction money on obtaining.
You can always ask permission to reimburse me what I spent there. Ah, we didn't know.
We need to have a force attorney.
Okay. I guess, getting back to.
I move it away, please, Your Honor.
I second, Your Honor.
Moved in second to approve the modification of scope of work. Any further discussion?
No, sir.
Honored and fair, please, aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Item 26 is an action item, and this is to approve a resolution authorizing the County of Starr to submit with the Texas Community Development Block Grant an application for 2019-2020, and to the Department of Agriculture.
That is correct. We are applying for a new, for the fiscal year 2019-2020, Judge.
I move it away, please, Mr.?
For what contract?
Street improvements. Street improvements.
Motion in second. Discussion. Honored and fair, please, aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Item 27 is an action item, and this is to approve a request from Mr. Canales, our county attorney, to open an account in, for Title 59 account for the county attorney's office.
I move it away, please, Your Honor.
Give me a second.
No, sorry.
I'm okay. I'm here for, I'm here for Mr. Canales. It was my understanding that that had already been approved or had been discussed?
I thought it had.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a different bank account. The first one was a CE, a CEU.
So this is a, a second?
This is the fourth of your account? Yes.
I move it away, please.
Second.
Okay. I have a motion in second to approve. Discussion. Honored and fair, please, aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Item 28 is similar, but this is for the discretionary spending budget. Well, I'm, I'll take it back. This is to approve a request for the 2019 proposed discretionary spending budget for Chapter 59. Is that in order, Mr. Carter? Is that in order, the spending budget for county attorney, Chapter 59? Okay, do we have a copy of the budget?
I can provide it after the meeting, Judge.
Do you have it there?
I don't have it, Judge, sorry.
We don't have it. You want to wait? You wanna wait?
On the table?
I would do some wondering if we're approving a budget that we haven't seen.
Yeah, we, we should get copies of those, so we can see what we're going to approve, you know, we just...
We have approved several judges, I've been hearing, the, the other, other budgets that we haven't seen in the Commissioners' Court.
Do we have it, Becky? Do we have the budget?
No, they shouldn't have any.
There, there should be two.
I have it here.
Okay, can, can you make copies of those, Becky, so we can look at them, and then we'll, we'll come back to them? Okay, if it's okay, I'll skip over Item Twenty-Eight and Twenty-Nine, and then go to Item Thirty, and this is, well, thirty, thirty-one through thirty-eight are budget amendments. Mr. Carter, are they in order?
Judge, Your Honor, those budget amendments have all been reviewed, and they're all in order.
Moved in second to pass. All in fair, please, aye. Oppose? Motion carries. We can, we can go back to Twenty-Eight and Twenty-Nine after executive session.
Judge, going back to Item Number Seventeen, Judge Gaca is not in town.
Go ahead and approve? Okay. Let's go back to Item Number Seventeen.
I also move, Your Honor, we got two items from that.
That number one?
We got Number Seventeen, do I want to?
No.
I also want to approve.
Second, Your Honor.
Okay, move in second to approve the appointment of the auditor. Discussion? All in fair, please, aye. Oppose? Motion carries. Again, we'll go back to Twenty-Eight and Twenty-Nine after executive session.